I think that IT is going to be more than that. Probably sixty-eight hundred dollars a month.
Hey, do we need to do the pledge allegiance since we've already did it? We need to do pledge allegiance since they've already did it before? We're getting going. We're good to go? All right.
All right, it's five oh eight, so we'll call the meeting to order. First up is review and approve the agenda. The soil conservation wants to be added, so if there's no objections to that.
I move for approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. All right. Number three is review and approval, the amendments of the meeting dated July ninth, twenty twenty-five.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then if soil conservation, you want to go ahead and come up, we can go ahead and get started with you. If you would just make sure the red light's on, on the mic.
I'm good here. All set? I'm gonna go right ahead, I guess. Good evening to each of you. My name is Darrell Donahue, I'm from Wilson County. And I'm here representing the Kansas Association of Conservation Districts on behalf of Bourbon County. And I'm going to give you just a little bit of background on why there's a soil conservation district in Bourbon County. And the importance of that, and how it helps tie in with why you're here. In nineteen thirty-five, there was money appropriated by the federal government for the formation of Soil Conservation Service. And each state then had affiliate memberships in that in the form of a conservation district. And each county in the state of Kansas, all one hundred and five, have a conservation district presence. It began with soil conservation measures to stop the dust bowl. And we are continually evolving now to not only include that, but to also improve our soil health principles. And where we've been in a drought, clean water and the abundance thereof. If it wasn't for a soil conservation district, Bourbon County would have been short on water these last several years because of the addition of the Cedar Creek Lake. The main thing we want to remember is that conservation is voluntary. We are not an enforcement agency, we cannot go out onto your place and say you have to do something. It's voluntary for producers, either on the land themselves or absentee landlords that own land. If they want to come in and participate in a program to help improve their property, they have that right to do so, and we provide them with free technical assistance and access to state cost share funds. And because we are in partnership with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which that is what evolved from the original SCS or Soil Conservation Service, there is the chance to participate in programs with some federal funding. You may have heard of the Farm Service Agency, FSA. We partner with them, but we are a different entity entirely. We stand alone. However, we do partner with the Kansas Department of Agriculture, with Secretary of Ag, the State Conservation Commission, which is made up of volunteers. We're all volunteers, with the exception of Mandy, she does get a paycheck. But with the state association that I'm on, I'm also on some national things, it's all strictly voluntary because we all have that passion to do right by the land. So in addition to the Department of Ag and the Division of Conservation, we also work with the Kansas Water Office very closely, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the Kansas Forest Service, Kansas Wildlife, Department of Wildlife and Parks, and the Bourbon County Road and Bridge Department, as well as the schools in the county. Because it's necessary that our students coming up understand why we need clean air, clean water, and healthy soil, and where your food comes from. Again, Bourbon County's Conservation District was established on May eleventh of nineteen forty-five, and it's still going strong today. As I said, it evolves with the new things that come across here. The big push now is on soil health initiatives by utilizing the cover crops to hold the soil in place, to filter the water that goes into your reservoirs, thereby reducing the amount of sediment that your water treatment plant has to work through. Even though we are geared more toward practices out on the land, we are there for everybody because we are nonpartisan. We work for everybody. We are the direct pipeline from the grasslands producer to the Kansas Legislature and to the Congress of the United States. And we are also the pipeline back from the legislature, back down to the producers with the information that they send through to us, and then we back to you. So the Conservation District works to keep money in the county. They have grass drills that they lease out, they are able to purchase seed to help get the practices going out on the ground. When a practice is decided upon, again strictly voluntary, think about the amount of money that is spent with a contractor, with a bulldozer operator, what have you. And they in turn, the amount of fuel and oil and repairs, meals, et cetera, that's staying right here in the county that otherwise would probably go outside. So do you have any questions for me?
I do.
Please.
So the county provides their money and the state provides a match based on what the county provides to help build the budget. That's the way I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong.
That's called aid the Conservation Districts, yes.
So what is the formula for that match? I talked to Jared on the phone and he said he's had a hard time finding out what that formula is because I think it would help us in analyzing numbers to see what's needed for the Conservation District to get the maximum match because I believe fifty thousand dollars is the maximum amount of money that they can get. But what needs to be contributed in order for them to get that fifty thousand dollars?
You want to speak on that?
Our forty thousand dollar budget, if we get fully funded by our county commissioners, we will get that fifty thousand dollar match. Otherwise, they will prorate or if you guys cut us, the state cuts us.
Okay, the forty thousand that you asked for when you came before is before, that's what we're still talking about, the same forty thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because they were here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
They call it a two to one match. Through a lot of lobbying, a lot of effort from Conservation Districts, the KCD Board, the SCC Board, working with the legislatures, they upped that amount from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. It was signed into law, I believe, state law, that that that's, yes, it's much needed, there are so many Conservation Districts across the state that can't fund health insurance for the employees. Because we are not county employees, we are not state, we're not federal employees. We're just on our own.
Morphin.
Yeah, we're kind of a orphan, but it's a two to one match.
So in my mind, that means you get twenty-five thousand, then you get the fifty. Because two to one for forty would be eight thousand dollars.
So that is the two one.
I'm mathing in my brain.
Every dollar you get from us, you get two from them, right?
Yes.
So if we give you twenty-five thousand, they'll give you fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Should.
That's correct.
Okay, but you asked for forty thousand.
Yes.
Now will they give you eighty?
No.
The cap's fifty.
Fifty thousand is the cap, yes.
See, across the state, it changes in different counties. It should be, originally it was meant to be twenty-five thousand. And other counties, and some of them on up north, have a tremendous budget. So, but it was originally meant to be an even one all the way across the state at the twenty-five.
I would love to know what the economic, I know there's economic benefit, I'd like to know what the number on that is that you guys because I've, no, I've worked in your office and I've seen the producers coming in and you guys provide a great service. And I think it would be valuable to know that.
Right, if you guys would look at this page in your folders that I brought last time, the income brought into Bourbon County. I think I quoted something like fourteen dollars, but that was definitely not accurate, I did the math. So if we start it, I'll wait till I find it, it should be like the third or fourth page.
I don't think I brought in, I think I just wrote in my public works, I didn't expect you to be here today, so.
Keep up, keep going, it should be the next one, next one? Next one after that, it's not the budget, it's the income, yeah, that page, right there. State funds brought into the Conservation District, the state aid the Conservation Districts. If we get our full funded budget from the county commissioners, we will have fifty thousand dollars. That's based on the matching funds. Our state water resource cost share program, these funds go directly to landowners for conservation practices. The state has funded us forty-four thousand dollars, two seventy-six ninety-eight. Our non-point source pollution control funds, and these go directly to landowners in Bourbon County, fourteen thousand one eighty-eight sixty-two. So that is a total, combining all of those is a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents.
And this is Bourbon County alone?
Right.
That's what I want to issue.
And these are just state dollars, though, I think there's probably more than just what the state, like, that's the number that I would like to know, like, what is going, like what you said, with these programs, what are these people also adding to the community when they come in and do these practices and help? Because there's more economic benefit than just what these tax dollars are brought in.
Correct.
So that's the total conservation assistance and operations money that benefit landowners in the county due directly to the funding by the Bourbon County Commissioners of forty thousand dollars. So if you go on down through here, in our partnerships with NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Services, they pay out forty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars in CRP, or ECP contracts with them. We have a grasslands initiative through the federal government, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, that pays out forty-nine thousand seventy-two dollars. The Farm Service Agency, as in the partnership, they have CRP payments of a hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. That is, if you add all of that together, as partnerships, as our being the hub and the wheelhouse of conservation in Bourbon County, that is three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-five thousand one ninety-nine twenty-two. And if you divide that by our forty thousand dollars from the county commissioners, that is a nine dollar and eighty-eight cent return on every dollar we get.
Ten percent.
Yeah.
And that's probably low because that's not, that's just tax dollars coming in.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I don't think so, I just would really like to know what the, like, what you said, the two to one match, is that twenty-five thousand, would that get you fifty, or?
We can try to do some.
I, yeah.
It's gonna, it's obviously appropriated.
Right.
And we don't, I don't know the formula. I've asked.
We've asked. I wonder if they know that.
But I'll try to work on that for you, we'll try to work on that.
The Division of Conservation is who does that, Kansas Farm, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's magic math some days, I think, I don't know. But, and I'm late to the party, I apologize, I wasn't supposed to be here, but I just wanted, you know, the fact that we we do work with state, and I think that's the state trying to aid in county, you know, it's a partnership. There's a dance, there's a dance with county, the dance with the state. And we want to dance with who brings us, I mean, obviously, we want to work. We're most, we're worried about Bourbon County, I mean, that's our, that's, at the end of the day, we want to work for the people of Bourbon County. Not necessarily the state, you know, I've barked at this guy right here sitting in that tan shirt as much as anybody. But, but at the end of the day, we want to, we want to work with Bourbon County residents, so. Anyway, I will keep you prepared.
Okay. My name's Ronnie Brown, and I live down by Hyattville, lived in the same house since nineteen forty-six. And I've been on the board for over forty years. So I've seen a lot of things come and go in the district over the years, and it's all, most all of it's been good, beneficial. And I can tell you, a lot of this county would not exist now without the Conservation District over the years, with the erosion and floods and all of that. And Darrell alluded to Cedar Creek Lake, and I want to talk about it just a little bit and how it come to be. I don't know of anything more important than water. I mean, we got to have that to exist even before food. So Cedar Creek Lake was established back in, what, I don't remember? In the nineties. And it comes through a joint committee feeling. I've been on this Conservation District Board for years. And through it, I have got on all the other boards, basically, the emergency basin advisory committee, the rural water district board, and all of those that deal with water. And I was on the Conservation District Board when funding come available for Cedar Creek Lake. Well, we didn't get it the first year because they was building a lake in Lenny County that probably needed the money worse than we did. So we kind of suck them to them and let them go with it. And I was sitting there when they turned it loose for the next year at a water office, a water official meeting. And I went back to the water district, said this is the time for us to act. If the funding does come available, and if we request it right away, we might get it, and we did. And Cedar Creek has been very valuable, we've been, several times we've been short of water without it. And we probably need another one just like it somewhere, but I don't know where we put it at. But that thing has done a lot of benefit to us, and we need more of those. Bourbon County is probably one of the better counties as far as water supply goes. Other than you get into, like Sedgwick County where they got the Ark River and all of that, but we've got a lot of dry counties in Kansas that would benefit from what we have here. And I'd just like to mention that the water office has been very thorough with us. The, all of the agencies that Darrell mentioned work excellent together. We're all partners, we all work together. And like I say, I've been on this board for forty years and was president, the vice president of the district. And have enjoyed every bit of it, and like I said, it's volunteer. All of those, and I served on the board that he's replaced me on, that KCD board, I was on it for about twelve years. I was on the National Association of Conservation Board for four years. So we've had inputs to all of this, and I've done a lot of lobbying in Washington DC and seen a lot of inside stuff, so, any questions for me?
Appreciate what you've done for the county.
Thank you.
One quick thing, after we're doing the recording of the advisory committee on July ninth, Josh, I think you had a question, and so we were gonna quickly clarify that, on where our funding comes from, some of what we've done, and how it's appropriated or spent. There are eleven counties in Kansas that have a mill levy. That mill levy cannot exceed two mills, which is fifty-five thousand dollars. But most of the districts like us go ask the county commissioners for funding. The district has two types of accounts, they're both taxpayer dollars, but each has its kind of own guidelines and rules as to how it can be spent. Our operations account, which is, I'm talking about our checking account, where our funding from the state and the county goes to. This revenue comes from the county general fund, or the mill levy, or the matching funds from the state of Kansas. These expenses can be used for payroll, payroll taxes, insurances of the district, health insurance included, education, funding, mileage for the supervisors and the district manager, myself, to attend meetings, state meetings, et cetera. And money in the operation account, we do not transfer to any other account. The subaccount of that is the special levy fund. We're still trying to determine about that account. It was originated from what I can tell in the nineteen seventies, and I asked Susan to kind of help with that, try to find out what money was and where it's supposed to go. But according to the Division of Conservation Law, accounts for the proceeds of specific revenue sources, other than operations or enterprise fund monies, that are restricted to expenditures for specific purposes, i.e. grants and cooperative agreements. It started back in the nineteen seventies as a way to help the county with erosion in the ditches. Because back in the nineteen seventies, there were only terraces, they started terracing stuff, they did not have waterways. And so every terrace in the county practically emptied up into the county ditch. So the county got money and sent it to the district to help with the road and bridge crew, public works, things like that. So, but we're determined to find out, more research is needed, to figure out what was deposited in that account and how we can spend it. Because we just, we don't want to improperly do that. So for right now, no money's going to be spent, or transferred, or spent until we can find this out. Our enterprise account, this account's revenue comes from the equipment rentals, our seed sales, and any district owned real or personal property. This account is for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to private business enterprises. These expenses can be used more broadly than the operation account, board meeting meals, awards, donations, purchase of equipment, and expenses for our required annual meeting that we're supposed to have every year. Money in this account can be transferred to the operation account as necessary. Our capital outlay account that we have under the enterprise fund is reserved for the purchase of a new drill for the district. Our drills are ancient, really, really, really worn, so that's what that money is for. The district provides drills as a service to the landowners that Darrell alluded to. We like to encourage people to plant highly eratable land instead of farm it. But that, again, is voluntary. These accounts have been used in collecting money since the district's formation for eighty years. So Kansas statute says our state matching funds provide authorization to request state financial assistance for each of the hundred and five Conservation Districts to assist in carrying out their duties as prescribed under Conservation District law through the state of Kansas. Conservation Districts are subdivisions of state government and are accountable on a cash law basis. We have an auditor that reviews the district's financial, and they perform agreed upon procedures. And this costs the district upwards of eleven to twelve hundred dollars every year that comes out of our operation budget, which is, for some counties, huge. I think that's about, other than that, the Conservation District cannot go borrow money. If we have twenty-five thousand dollars in there, we could go purchase something instead of taking out a loan for forty thousand. We cannot go into debt. So hence, that's why we have that amount of money in our capital outlay account to buy a drill, because we have to purchase it outright.
Intercept there. I can tell you how we got into the drill business to start with. First of all, they're very expensive, and most farmers was not familiar with them, and we got them so they could experiment with them. And a lot of them have bought the drills from the use of ours. But at that time, we got the first two John Deere drills many years ago. And they had those lease programs, but we couldn't do that because they owed on whatever they didn't pay. And they finally adopted, and I worked with them hard on that, to get a lease that did not cover the Conservation District where if we had to let it go, we were not obligated to pay. So for that reason, we had the drill, still do, and those leases are still available, I think, but.
So do you guys have any questions for me, is there anything that you have a question about?
Yeah, the special levy deal, that was a, you touched on that the other day, and I opened a bit of a can of worms with that this year. It's always been there. I asked, what can we do with this? And we dealt with Ms. Walker a little bit on it, and research started on it, and we have, you know, nobody was here, it's always been there. I mean, Ronnie, maybe, maybe Ronnie, but Ronnie couldn't remember, and I don't blame him, I forget things too. So at this time, we found some more stuff that maybe some state dollars went in, and I'm just not really ready. I, I mean, we, I had a great plan to try to get that back to work with Public Works or whatever, and we touched on that. But I, at this moment, until we know more about that account, I can't feel good stamping my name of approval on it. But we just started this, what, six months ago? I mean, and the clerk's awful busy too, I mean, we've had to go back through the catacombs a little bit. So as things develop on that, and we find out more information, we'll be ready to I mean, I'm fully ready to put that to use in this county, I just don't know how we can do it yet, so. That's the problem that we run into, so.
I might elaborate on that just a little bit, I do remember one function we did with that account back years ago. We had put terraces and waterways in a farm up by Fulton, and they drained out into the road, the waterway did, but it overflowed the road because there was too much water there, and it changed the course of water. And we went with the county and helped rebuild that, and to this day, it still airs, as far as I know.
All right. I think we're good. Yeah, we appreciate it, thank you guys.
Give me that math info.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thanks for your time.
I must say, this is a lot more pleasant meeting than the last one I attended.
We'll take what we can get when we can get it.
All right, up next we have the Public Works testimony, and I think Eric, back there, gonna come up here and help me go through it.
Sure, I've got something here, I mean, I've got all the individual, it's not noxious weed and all that stuff.
Yeah, so the, when you got it, we can
Right here.
So what we noticed with the Public Works is the sales tax fund and then the mill levy fund. And the biggest thing for Eric, the sales tax fund seems weird to me, like they transfer out some employee wages, but I don't know, I don't know the rhyme or reason of how they know what to transfer out. So the mill levy could be used for hard service roads. But the biggest thing is there's, the accounting, the accounting in the special tax fund, and even before Eric got here, you know, and like Eric said, you know, that's something he needs that would help him, they run, they run that on hard service roads, they run it until it's out each year. The problem is, they don't have their up to date numbers, they're two to three months behind, so.
Three months behind, on what numbers?
Their sales tax numbers to know where they're at and how much is left in their, the cash balance in their account.
Because of the way the receipts come in, I think.
Yeah, I think it's just
Susan can answer that question. And they said
Eric's, you know, some of his numbers don't come in, he's like, he may be two months behind on how much cash he knows he has to run on the sales tax.
It's, everything's posted for
Now it is.
Yeah, now.
In the past, it was.
Yes, 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 in the past. Yeah, so the last few months, I mean, as recent as just earlier this year. Yeah, so he's only had two budget things since May, he got one in February and one in May, so he didn't really know where he was at, other than that. So, and Susan probably talked better this, but the
We didn't get, start off with, we are getting them now. We went several months there, but we did not get reports. And there was some adjustments made, and we got reports here just recently. Within the last two months, we got several.
We send those after, after financial is done.
Absolutely did, but we had to wait.
Yeah. And so my personal recommendation is not to raise the Public Works mill levy. I think until a true, whoever's in Eric's job goes through, and the sales tax fund is utilized correctly or the right way where he knows exactly, because there are things that aren't being taken out of it, that can be taken out of there after rediscovered.
Like what?
The batch plant, part of the asphalt plant.
But we transfer to the road bridge fund, it covers that.
That's what I'm saying, that's the hard thing about tracking it, from my side, it was hard to track because they take money out of the sales tax fund, and then they do a transfer, but it's just a generalized transfer, doesn't really say, you don't audit that transfer saying what it's for.
He has a tracking of all the, Eric, correction, if I'm wrong?
I will.
You have a tracking.
Eric tracks all these projects, so he knows how many miles a road, how much rock, how much chip, whatever he's using to, that goes on the roads, how much land, manpower it takes, and so you can take those figures and look at it and say, okay, yep, that will cover the transfer. So if he had to go back and dig through all that, he could, he has that, that data. We always project what, how many miles he's going to do for the next year, and that's how we determine what our transfer will be.
But the transfer is just for wages, right?
No.
No, it's
It's for, but you have, you have other stuff coming out of the sales tax fund also?
Only if it's specifically for that, so like if we're doing fuel, and there's a big, we do a lot of the oil that comes in, I mean, that's for the asphalt, so. Yeah, that's, that's what, no, it's not that kind of, it's the oil that goes on the ground. Yeah, that's, that's what we're, no, it's not that kind of, it's the oil that goes on the ground.
On the ground, yeah.
And so, there are certain things that we can charge directly to there. But we have to break it down because the, the road and bridges, we're crushing rock all the time. So you could take part of the payment of the rock crusher. That could be attributed towards that for our chips. You could do, help me, help me think of some other things, fuel.
Your fuel for your dump trucks.
Because it gets charged to road and bridge, so you're reimbursing for that. Wages you're reimbursing for.
So this year, the transfer was six hundred and fifty thousand, right?
Because we planned on having a lot of roads done.
And so, the, the projected budget, the sales tax was one point three million?
Yes, and that, that fluctuates. So, so we work off of, we were meeting, when I was a CFO, we were meeting every single month. And we sat down and went to it through the penny to make sure, what do you have projected out? What bills do you have coming in? So that we knew, hey, we could do another mile of road. And so we were, we were constantly talking. He doesn't have that now.
Yeah.
So it makes it, makes it hard for him to do his job because there would be times when general ledger entries were not done timely. They just, they just weren't done timely. And so we would have to pull the information and say, okay, these are the expenses that we know are sitting out there, ready to be paid, haven't been processed. Once those are processed, this is what's going to hit your ledger. And he'd be like, okay, well, we've got all this coming in. So we had it down to the penny most days because we had to, we had to back into the number.
So maybe you can help me, and I, I tried to ask Eric, why you do it two different ways? Why you do a transfer and pull out of that fund at the both and not just pull out of that?
We used to have wages there, but there was cash flow problems and so we...
In, in the road and bridge?
Yeah.
So you're trying to cover it?
No, 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 no. We are not trying to cover it.
But if there's cash, if there's cash flow, how can it be cash flow if it all comes out of that?
We moved special bridge, bridge and culvert, all that to one. And when he was, he was moving people around. And so he would move a person from one department to another department. It wouldn't get moved internally in the payroll system. And so therefore, people were being charged in the sales tax fund that shouldn't be charged there. So I said, pull them all over into road and bridge because that'll make it easier for you to be able to track it. So that's what we did. Because it is, it's a nightmare because he may have somebody that...
Right, he is.
One month is working here and one month working here. And so, just to make it a smoother, easier process for them to look at it, we, we collapsed them all into one fund. And I feel like it's been going a lot better this year and easier to track.
Yes.
Do you, you feel that way? Okay. And, but...
We haven't started asphalt, so I can't...
And the, I mean, we haven't, I don't even know if we've made a transfer this year.
There's a small twenty thousand and then... So how do you decide what is taken out of that account and what is transferred?
We transferred that, that was merely because county distribution hadn't come in yet. So you can transfer it right back.
I mean, throughout the year, how do you decide what is going to be paid out?
He lets me know what his projects are.
So what is, what is, what can you take out and what can you not take out?
Hard, so the statute's really clear. Hard surface roads has to be attributed to hard surface roads.
Does that include payroll or is that only the materials?
Which, you know, we talked about, you know, as far as even mowing the ditches. I mean, that's as far as maintaining, you know?
Pothole patching.
We had Eric talk today. I don't know if bridges would be considered because bridges are a hard surface road.
Yeah.
A bridge, so mostly, so it could be.
Sure it could.
But it's still kind of vague how the wording of the, the sales tax was.
It is, and it's hard to, it's hard to track.
Yeah.
It's very, it makes it, makes their job very difficult because they do have to track it by job.
Yeah, and that's what we noticed. I mean, it was very hard to track. And when it comes to the end of the year, it can be... And have they always ran on run until you're out of money mentality? Yeah.
Try to get as much on the ground as we can as far as asphalt.
Yep. Never had a carryover. Any fund, honestly, except for the general fund.
Yeah.
They've always ran them to zero. But the mentality also has been, I'm going to spend my money because I'm not going to get it back.
Right.
So, that's the problem. The mentality is spend your budget down to zero because you're not going to get, or they're going to take it away from you the next year. So...
I will say Eric has done good on...
I would say, I don't think we've spent public...
Not you.
Yeah, not you, yeah, yeah, yeah. I will say even, because he, he's had a fund that he's built up, but it got used this year with...
Last year.
Last year with the flood. Which brings up a concern because they're going to do some turnover in the next, losing eight to twelve employees. And one of them would be the person checking over the FEMA things. And so that's highly critical that that's something they do because that's quite a bit of funds that can come in on that.
Critical.
And there's, from my knowledge, there's only two of us here that's ever done FEMA. Including me and Jennifer.
But I, I personally think that they can keep the budget numbers flat and still do a three percent increase in raises and be fine.
Do you think so?
See, that's going to be tough, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be tough, but I mean, I think it's very doable. Based on some of the, the extra money that you were telling me that you can put away. Now, like I said, the FEMA thing is going to be the...
We did put away. We don't have that there anymore.
I know, but you, the FEMA, you said if that's, should be...
If the FEMA money comes in, but somebody's going to have to continue on with pursuing that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, but that's just, you know, that, that, that's on the, that's on the commissioners to find that person to do that. There's money there, right?
Yes.
There's money there.
There is money to be had.
And that's part of the problem, I think.
But that has to be turned back into your infrastructure as well because you still have two bridges right now that you're going to have to put that money back into in order to get them back up to, I don't know the proper word, but they need some major attention. And we don't have the funding right now to be able to get those.
In your opinion, do those positions absolutely have to be backfilled?
In my, we, we were down to the bare bones, in my opinion. We, we really were. We ran thirty-eight employees with two part-time. And when it comes to your natural disasters, your snowstorms, your floods, all that, it's all hands on deck and we were down to...
And Eric, wouldn't you agree that we're down a couple of employees also that would help from other departments that would assist you? Wouldn't you have those natural disasters to go out and take pictures and document?
We have had other departments help as well. So, yeah, I, I would say we were at, the thirty-eight was pretty bare bones. And one thing that we tried to do in Public Works, and you'll see in there, was Dustin and I would cover all your overtime. We'd do your call-outs, whether it was middle of the night, weekend, whenever, so that a way we could pay our employees more.
I will say Eric's cut out overtime basically all the way, which I think helps with the...
We go to a forty-hour week, so whatever that means between Sunday to Saturday to get your forty hours in.
That's how he gave raises.
We...
Being modest.
Yes, absolutely.
He also, he's also working Saturdays at the landfill, just so that...
Yeah, and I will say, even when I was at the city, those guys would help out. When, you know, downtime on, they would come help the city. And they've done a good job working hand-in-hand, city and county together. And I still think there's opportunity there for some increased revenue with the rock purchase that was there when I was at the city, so I don't know.
Interlocal agreement needs to be looked upon.
And that's something that I think can be, that's a decent amount, especially what, what the city's planning on doing here in the next year. That can cover a lot of these raises, I, I personally think. And I think that's something that the commissioners should be able to get done pretty easy because we had it in place just a couple of years ago. I don't know why it stopped.
Whose responsibilities do that follow through on something like that?
That'd be the, the county commissioners and then the city manager or the Public Works. And so, it's not really all on Eric because he can't agree, so... And it's, it's in place. I mean, it's already there. It's just imagine getting hold of Brad and saying, hey, why aren't we doing this, you know?
Planning, long-term planning.
Yeah.
Long, yes, long, yes.
So I think there's ways there to cover some of this. Now we can, we can raise it and say...
I will say, of all departments, the only person that had a long-term plan was Eric.
Yeah, yeah, he has a plan, just not the, the mechanism to pay for it.
Well, we kind of do because as debt was rolling off, we had a schedule that as, we knew that we always need to levy or we need to have at least three hundred and thirty, it didn't get all of his things done, but there was always going to be three hundred and about thirty thousand dollars in debt service. And so we had this, this, as this debt rolled off, this debt would come on. And so we had a ten-year, almost a twenty-year plan that we set up.
Right.
But it was, it was not taken under consideration.
Do you guys still work four-tens and they rotate that shift or...?
We work whatever it takes to get your forty in from Sunday to Saturday. So that may be, if we were asphaltin', usually Thursday by noon, you were off.
Right.
And that's one thing you've done good at, it's not just eight to five. You guys might work extra and then take off comp, you know, which is...
There's no comp time.
Yeah, there's no comp time.
Oh, you did, no more comp time?
In our handbook, Bourbon County does not recognize comp time.
Oh.
Well, I think it's great though where you guys step in and you say that. Because when I analyzed all the overtime on all the county wages that stuff I was given, for the number, top of your, top of your salary, you had the lowest amount of overtime.
Yeah.
And that's, you're to be commended for that.
And I will say, this year, they might not be able to do as much hard surface road, depending on material, or depend on equipment and manpower.
Manpower is your big deal because...
And sales tax is up about twenty percent this year.
It is up, it's up.
Yeah.
To what it was the year before, so...
It's on one of your reports in there.
Yeah, so I think between that and then, I think they really need to though, in the future, decide on taxes, is taxes, keeping taxes higher, raise the mill levy, and how many hard, miles of hard surface road they do. Which I know everybody wants a hard surface road in front of their house, but there's a hundred and thirty-four miles they do in...
Of paved roads.
Of paved roads.
One thing that has to be done, and I'm driving this home and I know I'm leaving, but there has to be preventative maintenance done on what was laid in the previous years. Because if you don't take care and maintain what you already have, you'll end up in losing. It'll cost you twice, if not three times as much, to come back and redo it.
That's already happening on Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street towards Mapleton.
That, yes. Now, Hundred Twenty-Fifth, what, what we laid, I believe that was in twenty-one, was scheduled to be chipped and sealed this year. Don't know that that's...
So would you...
I mean, I don't know how that's going to be done, so...
Yeah.
For, for accountability, I mean, if you really want to know what true costs are, it's going to add a lot of work to that office. You could change the way you do it, rather than doing a transfer to road and bridge, you could do a transfer of expenses. So, at you, it's like doing a project cost. So you, you're tracking the cost of the project. Once the project's done, then you do a journal entry from the expense line over to the sales tax fund and say, this is what it cost. You could do it that way, too. It's just a lot more work and I don't know that we have...
And they don't really have set, I mean, they do have set projects, but a lot of times they just run until...
Mm-hmm. I mean, that person, whoever Public Works director is, would have to do a project management. And they have the software to do it, it's just doing, I mean, doing it. There's a lot of lost stuff. I mean, you'd be up every night doing that, wouldn't you?
You would. There's a lot goes on during the day.
So, you can get technical about it or you can just say, we know that this project costs about this much and we're going to transfer it together.
The only bad thing about it is, to me, being a numbers person, it makes it tough seeing a budget that big and just saying, well, it's just generally this and not exact, you know? And that's what makes it tough.
Then you have to do it the other way.
Yeah. I mean, to get a true idea of what they're, I mean, we know what they're spending, but to get a true idea, it's just tough looking at...
They, they have broken it down to, they know how much it costs per mile.
Yeah, yeah.
And that all depends on your fuel.
Yep. Yeah, because a few years ago, we had to cut...
Doesn't my thing show that the Public Works budget is less than this current year? It could be, it could be less than, I thought we were going to try to keep it the same.
No, it's showing to be more.
Are you talking about twenty-six or twenty-five?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six compared to twenty-five.
The total budget with a five percent increase in pay factor in was a hundred thousand more.
Well, road and...
Hundred and eight thousand more.
Bridge and sales tax is, is got a million three twenty for twenty-twenty-six and it was a million three eighty-three for twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, so that's just, I mean, that's, that's just your sales tax, so the, the mill levy part...
We budget the full amount to make sure we can use it.
So the total budget...
Get road and bridge up at the top.
Yeah. Two point nine one nine million, twenty-six, two point eight one one for twenty-five.
Don't you add those together? Don't you add them in, your sales tax together to get your total? I just want to be sure we're not talking about cutting this budget. And not that I don't think that we may have to on some of these budgets, but of all of them, that looked like it was one of the cleanest budgets I looked at through the whole shitbag.
Well, and honestly, the function of the county is to provide roads for the citizens. I mean...
Yeah, transportation. It's, so it's, the road and bridge tax, she has it one point three for twenty-six, which before that has been, this year it's been one point, or last year was one point three. This year, years before, it has been one point six, one point five, one point four. So it steadily increased until...
Twenty-four, it was down massively down, yeah. We were back at like twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two numbers.
Yeah, so the two years, three years before that's one point five, one point six, and on pace...
But we also had a lot of construction going on in town. It was generating a lot more sales tax, no, those years.
Yeah, but I mean, this year, it's back up.
Yeah.
And you have a lot of...
You have a lot of construction going on.
Contractors in town.
And so that's what I'm, like, I want to know, because parts of the year are going to matter on what those numbers are. Is the last quarter, is that when it falls off? So is it really ahead or is it...
Well, when I look at it...
That's why we look at it from month to month.
Yeah.
It's conservative. I, I try to stay conservative on the revenue side. So if it came in at one point five, great, you'll have some carryover. If not, and they want to do a budget amendment and they, that we're not having an early winter, then they can do a few more roads. I mean, that's why it was looked at every single month, is so that we could track and see what we could get done.
Yeah, if you look month, the sheet that she gave me, that it has, it shows month to month and it's up.
Especially with sales tax money, you can get more of that money and so you can do a budget amendment. There's certain things you cannot do a budget amendment for.
Yeah.
That you can.
Yes. A grant, if you get a grant, unexpected grant, you can do a budget amendment.
And that sales taxes specifically for road and bridge, it can't be used for anything else.
Hard surface roads.
Hard surface roads.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
You did a great job with the budget, Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's always done really well.
Not that I wouldn't have expected that, okay?
And I mean, I talked to Eric and I think we kept it flat. If they, if they do the, the, the catacombs with the rock and the sales tax number being up and the fact you might have to do less hard surface roads, which that came in after. But even without that, I'm, I'm confident they can do a three percent raise and still be fine.
Is there a way to find out what that impact is to employee benefits?
Well, I think we have to wait on that. The final thing on that, because it might be, well, hey, I mean, someone just told me they thought they were going to go up eighteen percent. And if they do...
I mean, a, a three percent raise based on...
Because I mean, that, that's not in this budget, but it affects it as a whole.
It may wipe it right out.
I was told it wasn't...
What is your meaning on that?
Not until August twenty-fifth.
How, how can you wait that long?
I can't.
You can't wait. I mean, that's impossible.
I've asked for it.
You, you've got to get something before then because that's unfair to you, it's unfair to the commissioners, it's unfair to anybody.
Well, it doesn't give you any time to make any changes to your benefit plan either.
That can be very costly. We could be talking about several hundred thousand dollars here. Because every employee benefits are almost four million dollars right now.
That's why I asked the question, like... Well, every time you increase wages, you're increasing that fund. Yes.
That's what I'm saying, and I'm not saying...
I don't have his wages in front of me, but I think a three percent increase was forty, forty thousand? Does that sound right?
Nothing. If...
Yes.
If it doesn't, I mean, that, that's, no, I agree with what you're saying, Josh. But until we find out what's going to happen with this employee benefit fund, we can't promise raises to any...
No, I, I.
Think about that. I think it's going to be up to commissioners to make the decision.
What I'm saying is, I think there's, I think if you keep it flat, there's enough money there to cover it.
Right, right now, his budget looks great.
Yes.
His budget looks great.
I do want to say on the salaries, we did not put anything in there for overtime, so pending what, who takes over or what have you, whether they're going to go.
This, like, based on Commissioner Bierbauer, um, what his plan was at one time to have three people take your job. Was that the, was that the plan that you did?
That was in that.
And so, I think.
Work session.
I think that, and I'll say, that plan was, he said fifty, fifty, sixty, which would be a hundred and sixty thousand. Which is way more than Eric makes, I don't know how that won't increase.
It will increase.
And I don't think Eric, do you, I mean, you run, you don't have free time, but you're, you can manage stuff and still be.
We, we've been doing it since I took over in October.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Twenty of October.
Yeah.
October twenty twenty.
Oh, that's ridiculous.
So I personally think from being at the city for a few years and looking at this, that there's interlocal agreements that can definitely benefit um the county. Financially, to the tune of forty, fifty thousand dollars a year.
You've got to be very careful with salaries, because when you. Raise salaries one place, you need to be thinking about, okay, there's other people that's going to think that they need a salary increase too. And then you take a hundred and two employees, all need a salary. I, and I'm not saying.
And I, right, and I want to be clear that it's not, I feel like they deserve that. I just want to make sure that we're looking at every account that that affects.
I think they deserve more, in fact.
Well, and to me, that's, it should be based on Eric, the public, you know.
Right.
It's not the commissioner saying, you know, and we did this at the city, instead of giving a three percent flat across the board, it's up to Eric to decide. This person deserves it, this person doesn't, you know.
It's not going to be up to Eric.
And I, and I, the, the other thing that comes into this is, and I know they're actively working on um employee handbook. They're actively working on um salary schedules, and so that, that can change the dynamics of a lot of things.
And they don't have a salary schedule.
No.
Right now, which is crazy.
Government entity, that's rare.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, yes.
And, and it's not fair.
No, it isn't.
Fair either. It's not fair.
Yeah.
And, and I, I'm, and I'm not, I guess, I guess I am being critical. I was going to say, I'm trying not to be critical. But it's not fair to the employees or to anybody else to not have a salary schedule.
Well, there's cons to it as well, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, and this employee benefit thing is, where I doubt we were going to talk about that one of these days, but that's, this is a biggie.
I think that'll be the very last one you guys talk about.
It's a biggie.
We kind of finalize some numbers. Because we need to know what's happening in all the other areas before we can go and see what those do to that.
Right. Well, and you know, there's several of these others that are going to be very easy as far as I'm concerned. I've got. I listen, nose lined up.
Eric, did you have anything else?
Thank you, Eric, for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you for the good work. I mean, looking at that, it's easy to see that the money's getting spent on the roads and that's what the intent of it is.
Yes.
And I do want to be very clear, if it wasn't for her these past few years, meeting with us on a monthly basis. And going in the back door to get our numbers and what have you, we would have been in trouble. Because when you're spending sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars a, a load on oil and you're running two to three loads a day and you don't know what your numbers are.
Yeah.
It was tough.
I bet it was.
And she needs a lot of credit for that, because otherwise we wouldn't have known where we were. So anyhow, just want to be very clear on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Susan. All right, any follow-up discussion? Oh, Eric, sorry about that. On the landfill, do you mind answering a few questions real quick? That's my fault.
I think the landfill needs to stay where it's at. That's my opinion, based on what I can read here.
Joe has a few questions.
Okay, sure. How do you set your fees for the landfill?
They've, they've been set from, we actually sat down a couple of years ago and we broke it down. And I don't have the spreadsheet up here right now, but we sat down and broke, made sure that we were able to stay in the positive and not the negative. To where we were still able to make money and provide a service to our, to our people. Now granted, we can make way more off of C and D than we can on our MSW. Um, but that's, and we do charge uh ten dollars more a ton for out of county or state than we do for our locals.
Do you have any idea what your out of county ratio is?
I don't off the top of my head, no.
It probably should have gone there last year.
Do you still think that you are charging enough?
I can answer that. So I was in the trash business for twenty years. And what we looked at, we used to go to Allen County, then went to Arcadia. We never came here because the rates were too high. Um, we just didn't, we just, if Arcadia's closed, we'd come here. It is cheaper to drive to Arcadia. And I would say the revenues have increased at the landfill because of trash, private trash haulers bringing it in. Would, would you agree?
Absolutely.
Two or three or four companies, I mean, and um, so to me, that's one thing you have to look at as a business. Allen County has a rate, you can factor in fuel as a person coming in, how much it, you know, what would keep them here instead of going to Arcadia? Or um Allen County.
And have we looked at their rates lately to compare?
So, I looked and it was um, yeah.
Does this liaison, yeah, approach to take it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Pass it in this liaison?
Absolutely. So when Commissioner Bierbauer said something to you, I called, um, in Allen County, I've been out of the trash business ten, twelve years. And they've raised one dollar or two dollars in ten years, and that's it. So they're funded. If you live in Allen County, you basically get free trash service. If you live in Crawford County, you have one Saturday a day, you can go there and dump your trash for free. Um, so it, it's hard to compete with Allen County, the way their tax setup being a full landfill, but.
So as, as, as his, you know, I've been digging into this, so I don't have, I don't, I do not have the full picture. I'm beginning to peel back the onion layers. So I have questions and you, you sound like, you know, you said you've been in the, the refuge business and. Uh, Mr. Smith, you're an engineer in this. So. If Allen County raises, right now we're paying roughly ten, ten thousand a month. Somewhere around that to take our stuff to Allen County, but if they start, if they raise that up, that's going to drop the margin.
We should raise ours.
We have to raise ours, yeah.
That's what, alright, so we're.
That's what I would say. So me personally, I would find that number to be comparable. Of what a, a business person would look at if they're going to go there or here, you know, by factor in fuel and man hour, I'd find that number. And almost keep it steady with Allen County.
Right, so they go up two percent, we have to go up two percent, just to, because right now, if, if they go up and we don't go up.
Yeah.
The, the margin shrinks and that's not sustainable.
Yeah.
Okay? And the other thing that I was speaking to you about, Mr. Smith, the other day, and I'm sorry, we didn't get a chance to talk more on it, but. To me, it's like, when we're bringing in a product at a certain dollar amount, okay, and then we manipulate that product for a hundred and twenty days. And, and I did the math and, and my math says that we're spending, we're, we're bringing the product in for forty dollars. But it's costing us eighty-five dollars to complete that product, so that we could put it on the, on, on our landfill. We're losing money. So I'm not sure how we need to work that, that's why I asked for your assistance.
Are you saying if you don't even.
That's where my question comes from.
If we should even be in the landfill business.
Well, I think, yeah, that's.
Or have we even considered the fact that we could raise landfill by ten percent?
Right. I don't know. These are all, these are all questions that, that for lack of, no pun intended, has been buried.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to dig this up and re, and, and investigate this because, you know. There's a pros and cons for everything, and I need to see the whole sight picture as a commissioner to make, to make an intelligent decision. On, on his department or.
Raising by ten percent could have a negative effect.
Yes.
And so my suggestion is to.
End up at the ditch.
Reach out to four, the five biggest people that go out there.
Right.
And just have a sit down with them and say, hey, we're in a spot.
And, and, yeah, and I'm not even talking about the people who came and spoke at the table before I became commissioner. I'm not talking about. I'm talking about that one product, where I'm just like, do we really need to bring it in? I, I think we need to. I thi- I think on the surface, I think we need to bring in that product, because otherwise, we're going to spend more money.
Yeah.
Sup- uh, uh, supplementing that product. Makes sense, bringing something else in to supplement the use of that product, but my thing is. The reason I'm cagey about right now is because I don't have the contract.
Yeah, because it brings in revenue.
We don't have the information.
Right, I don't have the information, so, you know, I, 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 I like where you're going with this.
Because it brings in revenue, we tend to think of as, how do we break even, how do we not?
Yes, sir.
Other departments, let's say parks, you know, let's say that, you don't think about making money. You lose money, the, the government loses money on everything they do.
Yes.
If that raise too high, people wouldn't take it to Allen County. You're going to end up in the ditch um and stuff, so it's, it's also a service. Um, so you factor that in as well, like you would anything else. Um, but I, I, I personally think the first thing you do is just do a, a cost analysis with. The two, three local closest places, you can take trash and, and run that.
Uh, Eric, when you spoke to us before, you talked about the needing an extra trailer for the landfill. Was that in the budget?
I believe it was in the bottom down there.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's something you're have, going to have to really think about, because Allen County, anytime that there's a high wind warning by the national weather, they're shutting their gates.
And I will say this.
Miss Sherrtine made me think of that, because I just remembered that you mentioned that, I have.
Yeah.
And your employees are going to hate me for this, but. As a private business, we would take it to Arcadia. It's not as fun taking Arcadia, because it's not as nice down there.
Their price is a lot higher.
No.
They, to us, they are.
You can negotiate that, so.
Okay, well.
We negotiated cheaper than Allen County because of the, the volume.
Gotcha.
And so they would do that with you, and you guys used to take it down there, but here's the problem, if it rains, you get stuck, the, the employee gets muddy, stuff like that. But as a private business, we suffered through that and, and I know the employees only hear about it, but sometimes, you could probably save money taking Arcadia. You can probably go down there, cut a volume break, but your employees are going to be a little bit mad, because it's not as nice, not as.
See, that's information, that part, that part of the information, that's new to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm like, okay.
What's that going to do to your equipment as well? Is it going to tear it up?
So here's what we did, I, and I'll tell you, we, we finally told them, you want our trash, we're not backing over when it's wet, we're stopping at the solid ground. You have your bow mag, you can push it, simple as that.
Okay.
The problem is, the people you negotiate with, that's who you stay in contact with, because the workers are going to get mad, you're not going back far enough, but. The people that's dealing with the dollars, they're going to say, do what you need to do, and keep coming down here.
Clerk has a question.
Um, one thing that isn't considered when we look at the landfill budget is the benefits do not hit that budget. So if you had a true cost, you were probably breaking zero. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah. That's one of the things that we talked about earlier is, and you can, we can do it percentage wise. I mean, you know, we don't have the time to go through and analyze each, every employee and what it is. But we can take the overall percentages by each department and go back and figure the percentage of the employee benefits gone. Because that, that is something that's important to do, instead of having it all dumped in that one fund that's forming, like three, three million nine hundred thousand or whatever it was. I could not, that's a lot of money.
So, I mean, I, you know, I think you're doing um good looking into that. Like I said, when I took over the trash route, they hauled Allen County, we saved quite a bit of money negotiating gate rate. Down there in Arcadia. It's shorter um and everything, so like I said, it's just not as nice, because they're not a rock quarry also, so.
That's a great question, so I'm glad.
Just be very, very careful raising the prices, because it does end up in the ditch, and we had it this week and it's. But.
My father-in-law lives around the corner from the dump. My kids say Grandpa Frank lives at the dump.
It's just more than raise rate, too, you're out of county rate, I mean, that's same thing Allen County does. They have, each county has its own rate, you know.
Yep.
Um.
And out of state as well? Maybe you want to go even higher for out of state, because you are getting several.
We won't get that, because Allen County, when I was hauling trash, not supposed to take Missouri trash, so I honestly don't know how you guys are hauling over there.
Okay.
So we couldn't with Missouri trash. Yeah. But I think, I think that's some of the avenues you can, I think you're on the right track to help build some of the.
Yeah.
I think next time, what are we going to, are we going to do public safety?
Are we?
Uh, are you done with, you have any other questions?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I clarify a statement for you? Um, the employee benefits fund is going to look completely different in twenty-five and twenty-six than it did in twenty-four. And let me explain why. Um, when we were on the state health plan, the way the system was set up. For the general ledger is it was not flowing through a liability account. So your budget was automatically inflated, because you got a reimbursement from the employees for their premium portion. So about one point, huh, one point, don't, don't take me on, at work, one point four million was employee benefit premiums. So you could take that off of your budget line to really get your true cost. So that's something that's going to look different in twenty-five and twenty-six, because we went off the state plan and we are no longer doing it that way. We take it to a liability account, let it sit there, and then we pay it out of that.
I wondered why the big difference from twenty-four, because I saw that and I was like, well, I know the costs have gone up, but that explains it.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
What, what portions do the employee pay of a, of a single health plan?
I have that, I can send it to you.
If it's single, it's zero. They don't pay anything on a single plan.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm, yep, they get, it's free, yeah. So, and we only have two health plans, so.
Oh, really?
So some get a little bit bigger contribution than, than the others.
One of the things that I did look at was I went back and looked at the one at the, that we used to have at the school when I was out there, okay? And they have like plan one, plan two, and plan three, I think, you know, and it's all based on your deductible and, and the amount that's paid for it.
We have one plan that's um a thousand dollar, I think a thousand dollar deductible, and then we have a catastrophic plan, so we really just have two. So, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, so we'll set the time and date for the next meeting, or do we know which department?
I don't, I don't know whether you guys listened to the last commission meeting.
Yes, I did.
The very last part of it, the closure cost for the.
The landfill.
Yeah. Yeah, two hundred and nine thousand dollars, is that what they have to have in reserve? So we need to.
That's what, I mean.
It's not the two hundred thousand.
Right.
Where it's going to come from, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and I, I still think that's some of the things um.
You know, I think this is all, isn't very important, but it just seems like we should have started this in February. And not when we did, because the fact, ever, and I'm not knocking the commissioners.
Right.
Okay, but every meeting I come to, there's something new that's in there.
Well, and that's, that's what I'll say, you know, we came late, and so they, they all need something, and so. In every year, even the city was always given and then decided later, and nothing's decided, so that's why I think personally, you hold the line on it and then.
Work on twenty-seven.
Yes, yes.
Really, because, because based on, I mean, there's been a half a million dollars at least. If, if not more than three quarters of a million of requests since we got our information in June, whenever it was our first meeting.
Yep.
June ninth, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't even, it's not even in this stuff we were given originally.
I know.
I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard to work on a budget.
It's always moving.
So you don't want public safety to come next?
No. We probably should.
The next biggest.
Well, we didn't ask Eric, what I was meant to ask him to, I mean, are they serious about this enterprise car thing?
So the.
Not this year, but put, put it for the next year.
Enterprise for Eric, um.
He was very interested in it the other night when he presented it.
The en- the enterprise only does the work trucks, not like the dump trucks.
Right.
Eric told me he suggested buying those used and not going.
Not doing that.
Now, Mack has a program, and maybe, Mack has a program for the dump trucks. Um, and Eric hadn't had enough time to, um, it's seventy-five thousand a year. For five years, I believe, I have to double check, is what it was. Um, and I asked Eric what a new truck was, and he wasn't for sure off the top of his head, so there's still some stuff there, but um.
Not for the regular pickup trucks.
He suggested, and I'll say for being a city too, it's, you know, those trucks get driven a lot, but they're not as important. And, and where they're at on equipment, they need to focus on the stuff that's getting.
They need the biggest.
Yes, yeah.
That's right, okay, that's.
And so Mack presented something, he said.
Okay.
Um, and I haven't got that from him yet, but Mack presented something.
But I, I do have, I, I did get the information from the commission meeting.
Yeah.
On what they presented.
Yeah.
At, uh, because so do I try, do we, do we meet in a week or two? I mean, we're going to run out of time here.
So I imagine next week, we, whenever we, is next?
Yeah, can we do it on Thursday instead of Wednesday?
I don't care.
Thursday good for you.
I'll make it work, whatever day you have it.
I don't know about great.
That would be the thirty-first.
Well, we can just tentatively do that and then.
At four thirty?
Yeah.
Because I'll have to do that.
Yeah, so four thirty to the thirty-first, and it'll be public safety.
Okay, and, and now tell me this, if I'm out of order, okay. Okay, but like, when we're having these meetings, see, I would like have Susan in here and or Jennifer in here, just so they can answer some questions right along.[1653.14]
I agree.
We can answer, so you handle most of the money. I mean, I'm, I'm just, you know, if, but maybe that's not appropriate. I don't know.
No, I think it's, I think it's up to them, but if they're fine doing it, then, definitely helps.
Yeah, because there's lots of things that we, we four are new on this one. Right. And it seems like we're being rushed. I'm not complaining, but it seems like we are being sort of rushed on what.
If I could just make one statement, I've been doing these budgets for a long time.
I know you have.
And this year, this is what I feel like we're faced with, and we don't really have any options. Um, I think everybody's budgets are going to have to stay flat. And you are only going to be able to increase the things that we can't control, like liability insurance, work comp insurance, and, um, health insurance. And that'll be a decision whether or not the commission wants to say, yeah, we're going to cover it or we're not.
And, you know, that's what I was wondering.
I feel like that's where we are.
Because I looked at some of those rates the other day, and then, and I know some people that have already not knocking, not knocking you guys, but they've already got their budgets completed. And they've already seen what their health insurance and stuff was going to. And man, it's.
Yeah.
Almost catastrophic. I mean, really, it is.
I know ours is not, I've been told ours should not go above ten percent, but that's still a big number.
That's a lot. Ten percent.
And that's the, the national average is always seven to ten.
Yep.
Always that. So that's, I've known this a long time. I, but I, I just feel like that's where you're going to be this year. I know you're, you're worried about hitting a deadline.